Okay, I want to call to order study session August 18th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Cardona is absent. John Gill.
Here.
Donna Little.
Here.
Jason Vlasic.
Here.
Nancy Wooland is absent. John Kennedy is absent. Robert Burleson.
Here.
Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Ken Kraus.
Here.
Brian Blazek.
Present.
And Chris Salatas.
Present.
First item on the list, Astoria proposed rezone to PUD for 97 single-family lots at 10122 Parish Avenue.
Good evening, my name is Michael Herbers with Diamond Peak Homes, presenting our covenants for Astoria. I've got Mark Anderson with Anderson and Anderson as well, who put together these documents for us and has done a good portion of our, you know, covenants and restrictions in our other developments as well. Of course, it is roughly 70 pages thick, so I'm not expecting to go through all of it unless anyone's a speed reader here that wants to go through it. However, the nuts and bolts that I believe you guys are probably most interested in can be found on page 18, which does talk about the square footages, the finishes of the home, of course, the amount of stone, you know, the landscaping, everything of that nature. You know, I know it is important for the town of St. John to see all of that in our covenants so we can be held accountable for what we build. You know, so with that being said, all of our, you know, square footages do meet the town ordinances. We are presenting 30% stone on our homes along with the two-foot returns. This way, it just kind of rounds off the home of that nature. And of course, we are not allowing vinyl siding in the development either. So if there's not stone on the home, it will be LP siding or trim. Of course, all of our driveways are to be concrete, no blank elevation. So every elevation on the home will have a window of some sort, just to, you know, break up the monotony of each side of the home.
Same thing.
Trying to think what else. Of course, point number 10, we do go into details with, you know, the landscaping of the home. Every home will include, you know, a minimum landscaping, which would be a fully sided yard, a sprinkler system, or excuse me, a fully front-sided yard, five feet back of the front corner, the rest to be seed and blanketed. Minimum, or excuse me, a minimum of 22 shrubs or flowers in the flower beds. And of course, in the parkway, we will have, you know, the town of St. John approved trees in there as well. Again, a lot of the other pages are, I guess you would say, legal documents, you know, binding us to, you know, keeping the sites clean and everything of that nature. I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to add anything per se, if you guys have any questions at the moment?
Yeah, that's right, so we tried to incorporate.
You tried to speak in the mic.
This is Mark Anderson. We tried to incorporate your prior comments with respect to the development, square footage, and everything else. One thing I would note is with respect to trees, we've just referenced the, whenever the then-current tree listing that the town has, we've had some issues in the past by putting in certain trees and listed as to what the ordinance would require, but then maybe as time goes on, then the trees change. So we just list the then-current trees when a homeowner or developer is putting in those trees. The other thing too, I just want to bring up, so it's three different petitions that we had filed. Those are the PUD, and then amendment, rezone, and then subdivision two at this point in time. So all three were filed last week. We've not paid the filing fee. We're working with Sergio to make sure that we get the right dollar amount here. I've got my check ready to go, though.
Anybody have any questions? So yeah, there's a lot to look at here in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
We're over that.
So again, the plan right now is to be at the public hearing on September 1st. We will have confirmation tomorrow morning from the Times if our legal notice will be published by this Friday. We did get confirmation from the Post Tribune that we will meet the deadline, but of course, we're waiting to hear from the Times first before we post something to the Post Tribune and then find out that the Times can. And of course, we do have our 300-foot adjoiner list put together. It's roughly 144 homeowners, so we have that all ready to go. Of course, the post office probably won't be too pleased with us bringing that many, but we plan on, you know, spreading it out over, you know, Thursday and Friday as well. So that will all be sent out. Legal notices will be in the proper hands. And then we'll be at the public hearing on September 1st as long as we have confirmation with the Times tomorrow morning that they can post for us.
Will that meet the 15-day requirement?
It was a 10-day requirement.
So the...
I'll double-check.
No, so the plant commission in St. John basically recently amended its rules and regulations to make those consistent with the zoning ordinance. And that requires 15 days' notice prior to the date of the hearing.
Okay. Because Sergio sent us some letter, an email this morning indicating 10 days, so I guess it is now in effect, the 15 days.
So, yeah, I don't know what Sergio sent. I don't know what, I'm just looking at the date that's indicated on the petition for zoning map, which appears to be dated August 12th. And so that was six days ago, last Friday. If, but I also see the date of Mr. Herbert's signature or the petitioner's date of July 14th, which would have predated the date that I think that that action was taken. So I'd have to talk to Mr. Mendoza about that to confirm.
Okay, we'll check with you then tomorrow morning. And we'll check with Mr. Mendoza as well. If not September 1, then we'll see you on October 6.
October 6, I believe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to also add, is there any form of agreement that will be entered into with the town for purposes of the planned unit development that incorporates any of these architectural restrictions?
We can do that if you'd like.
It's a requirement of the ordinance. And I don't know if Sergio has discussed that with you, but typically for a PUD rezoning, the ordinance requires that the plant commission can basically require reasonable requirements. I know this has been discussed in prior meetings about the architectural standards. I think simply including them in the covenants does not essentially bind the developer with the town pursuant to the agreement set forth in the town ordinance.
And that's fine, we're happy to do that. It's just a question of the timing of getting that done, if it's done, you know, we file everything else or we work with you.
Are these restricted covenants, is that what they're calling them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's between the homeowners.
But yes, that's not her.
Okay, well, I'll talk to Sergio about those items.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, Michael.
Yes, sir.
The accessory buildings on page 23, you have 12 by 14, which would be 168 square feet, but the town's accessory building has a max of 160 square feet, 10 by 16.
Okay.
And then we allow it to be 14 feet to the top of the roof instead of 12. So it should be 10 by 16, 160 maximum square foot, 14 feet to the peak of the roof. So if you want to be consistent with us.
Okay, yeah.
Those changes will have to be made.
Yep. That can be made pretty easily. So, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Next item on the list, Meany, M-E-A-N-Y, proposed subdivision for one single-family lot at 8901 Deodore Street. It's a southeast corner of Deodore Street and 89th Avenue. Did I pronounce that right? How do you?
That's correct. My name is Leo Meany, and I'm here with my wife, Marla Meany. And you probably know Stuart Allen from Terengis Surveying. So we're here to talk about a hopeful conclusion where we can do a single-lot subdivision. We're planning a 2,900-square-foot ranch, all brick. We're trying to keep it as simple as possible from the point of view of not asking to subdivide the property. It's all going to be, we're going to use the whole two acres for just our one house and lot. We, I read through the provisions of a larger subdivision that require quite a bit more streetlights and curbs and sidewalks and things, and we're trying to keep it very simple and would be looking to waive some of these requirements, specifically really the sidewalks and streetlights. So we're just wanting to build a single, simple home on the lot, and that's our primary focus. We did run into a little bit of a surprise this week where we had purchased the property and had checked prior to doing that with the township about sewer and water access. And I checked, there was a couple of changes, and since the time we bought the property and personnel, and we double-checked actually a second time before we annexed, and we've now just found out that in fact, there is no sewer. So a bit of a surprise here that sort of, I think Stuart found the same thing from his discussions with the township. So a little bit of a surprise with the town, sorry, not the township. So aside from that, though, we've got to figure out how that works for us, but our goal is primarily just a simple, single-lot sub where, again, we don't have sidewalks and some of the other requirements that would be consistent with a larger subdivision.
What's closest to a sewer, do you know? How close is it, the closest sewer?
Parish, there's a line that runs north and south in between. Are you looking at the, okay, yeah. There's actually, I'll walk over here. This manhole here, obviously, there's two homes here that...
Please don't...
Yeah, you got to talk, you got to talk in the mic. Because there's people online that...
So in between lots, the line runs, starts in between, it's the western manhole that's shown in between Lot 1 and 2. Okay? The run starts there, goes south. Unfortunately, that one is not very deep. It's only, it inverts at like 716. The northwest corner of Lot 1 is at 714. So it's impossible to head it, you know, send it north and then go west because it's not deep enough. When I talked to Bob Davis, he went out here and did some investigation, as my crew did too. We couldn't find the manholes that were supposed to be on Deodore and on 89th. But we do have the, I calculated an invert of about 713. It really screams, like, a 3.5% slope, that pipe going south. And actually, the next manhole south of there is at like 709.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they didn't keep it deep. But I calculated if they drop a manhole between Lot 2 and 3, and if he was able to get an easement from the developer, which is the owner of Lot 3, it would be a 713 invert there, plus or minus. And he could go west and have an invert of, you know, it's 721, 22 rim elevation there. So there's plenty of fall there. You know, obviously, the trick is getting an easement to obtain an easement in order to get that. And that would also be able to service Lot 2, or I'm sorry, the property to the south if they ever decided to annex into the town of St. John. There aren't any other houses, unless the guy to the south decides to subdivide and do multiple lots, which would obviously require infrastructure and things like that. But he has an existing home, and there's no other homes or lots to the south, and it hits a wetland to the south of there, and a lake. So there's only going to be two houses there, an existing one, and then if Mr. Meany is able to build his home there, those are the only two that would be serviced from that manhole. It's kind of in a perfect spot, actually, you know. You can see the borings that were done. Before he was annexed into the town of St. John, he had John McQuestion, and he would have to do a mound system there. And I believe that's what he would, you know, if that did not happen, he'd asked for you guys to allow him to do a septic mound system there.
What's the minimum lot size for septic? Do you know, Ken?
I don't know off the top of my head, but you have to be able to do a 100% changeover if it's a normal septic field. But in a mound system, I think you, we put them in parks before, and, you know, it all depends on what load you're going to put on it.
Okay.
For one house, it would be relatively small.
Okay.
I did talk to Stuart about the sanitary sewer earlier, and it looks like the plan that he came up with is feasible as long as he can get the easement to put the sewer in. And if he takes it to where he, to the, basically, the southeast corner of this property, the owner of the lot to the south, if he did subdivide it like Stuart mentioned into multiple lots, it would be up to him to extend it.
Okay.
And the thing is, it's falling off that side, so he couldn't extend it very far.
Well, to the west, it's pretty high. Here at 720, I think, at the southwest corner. So that's kind of the ridge. Everything slopes to the south from in between that lot line. It's almost like the ridge, everything slopes towards the pond. And for his lot, everything slopes north and east, goes underneath the 89th Avenue culvert that's there. Correct. Which is also where Lot 3, 2, 1, 2, and 3 also drain to that same spot.
Have you thought of an E1 and directional drill it into that manhole between Lot 1 and 2?
You talking about a...
A little...
Force main?
A force main, little, it's like ejector pump, you know?
That was the, obviously, it would have to be accepted by you guys.
Right.
I don't know if that's...
And you'd still have to get the easement, you know?
Well...
Between those two lots, I would think.
I mean, yeah. Unless you use existing easements, which there's...
Is there one there?
There's an easement, there's a 10-foot utility easement along the north side of 1 and a 15-foot easement on the east side of 1, which, obviously, that's a lot longer run. But, I mean, you could gravity flow to sort of a lift, or pumps to pump it, you know, directionally bore through that hole.
Right.
You have to make a turn at his, and tear up quite a bit of that guy's lawn. It's a brand-new house, I think it was the last year, year before, 2019.
And the right-of-way on Deodore, is that already been, that's already been dedicated?
No, that's to be dedicated.
To be dedicated.
The only way up to the dark center line, and then the dark center line of 89th, you know, go to there. I put that curve in there because the road actually follows that, so.
Right.
So you have enough right-of-way to...
Is that enough right-of-way? Do we know? Ken, offhand?
How much right-of-way is that? I can't...
30 feet.
30 feet from the...
30 feet from the center line?
Yeah, and there's a, there's an 18-foot parcel that is unincorporated. There's a section line, and then there's 18 feet to his north one. So technically, you have 48 feet from where the section line would be, but he only annexed that, so the north 18 feet of the section is in unincorporated. He's kind of a bridge. Incorporated, incorporated, and then he's like...
Right.
In the middle here.
Okay. So his north property line looks like almost on the north edge of the pavement?
Yeah. Yeah, and there's actually a jog from the dedication to the east where he's getting more than the people that are easted.
Okay.
Dedication of right-of-way. You can see it on there, I don't want to do that is. Thank you with that pointer, by the way.
Okay.
There you can see the difference between the dedication from Rose Garden and versus what?
Okay, any questions? Guys, got any questions? Okay, yeah, we'll have to, you know, toss that around with, you know, waving the sidewalks and what else, and streetlights.
The direction of, I, I don't, he would like, if he's not able to get these, I mean, well, all the options that could happen here are, you know, a septic mound system. If he obviously pursues that, he'd want to know if that's something that would be acceptable because he's willing to do that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the preference is to figure out how to get into the septic. That's what we plan for.
To get in the sewer, you mean?
Yeah, sorry, get into the sewer, yes. Get into the septic, no, get into the sewer, but as Stuart's indicating, our fallback position would be the mound system.
Right.
Yeah, we were told on several occasions that there was sewer on 89th.
Right.
So I guess the condition that he would need to have, I guess, is if he wasn't able to do that, he would be able to do a mound system.
Yeah.
Because obviously, that would be your decision because it's not something he can just do.
Yeah, because you have to do, because you have to do the switchover.
Right. Yeah, I don't, you know, this is new waters, you know, annexing without being tied into the sewer system. I don't know if I've ever approved something like that.
Well, whenever we've had a subdivision come in, this is unique because it's a one lot. They have been forced to extend whatever sewers to their site in order to serve them and potential buyers of lots in that subdivision. So I see this as kind of the same way, and Stuart has a really good plan for a gravity sewer to get through here. And I would rather have the gravity than ejector and force mains.
Yeah.
Or the mound system. The maintenance on the ejector system, because it's now a force main, is usually through a small pipe, clogs easily. Mound system usually lasts for a really long time, but when they go, where are you going to put the replacement? Because you can't put it in the same place. So I would recommend the gravity sewer on this one. Another thing they didn't mention for, on the waiver list, would probably be curbs.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so you got curbs, sidewalks, streetlights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that puts us in a situation, obviously, where we couldn't afford to build there. So, and we understand why those requirements are there, but that's our request is to waive those items and to just have the simple one-lot subdivision that, and the property is, basically stays the same way as it currently is.
Right.
Isn't that Public Works? I wouldn't think so.
I don't know what the mood of the board is here on those items, or...
No, that's in the subdivision's control.
I know we've pushed in the past for sidewalks.
We just recently did with the one-lot subdivision in the Preserve, so I don't know how we do, make one do it and not another, honestly.
So, okay, so I did notice that apparently you guys gave a waiver to Lot 1. And I did the honest vote for Lot 1, there are no sidewalks on 89th.
So you'd have nothing attached.
From Parish to, so they were allowed not to have sidewalks, I'm assuming, because there was no intention of improving 89th Avenue.
Yeah, when you say "they" though, it wasn't this "they."
It was the town.
Right.
I'm sorry, I...
Yeah, it was passed, it was passed plant commission.
Understood.
That waived that.
Understood, yeah. So, I mean, it's just, the sidewalk would go to...
It would dead-end.
It would dead-end.
Yeah.
Onto the current property to the, there's also kind of a, kind of some drainage situations there too as well, which can be worked around, but I think it's... Sidewalks would have, there probably would have to be additional right-of-way taken.
No.
If you are going to require him to do sidewalks, because it's, may I put a 40-foot radius there? I think it's super important that he gets a waiver for sidewalks, so I don't know if, and I understand your situation.
Yeah. Yeah, like Donna said, you know, it was one-lot subdivision on 93rd, and we required, and it was, you know, landscaping, and there's a flared end section, and, you know, there was a lot of issues, and we still required it because it just, if we keep doing, waiving the lot, the sidewalks, then we don't have any sidewalks, and we never will. And, yeah, it's out in the middle of nowhere, but...
Yeah, I mean, we're not talking about 260 feet of sidewalk. We're talking about 300, 400, 500, almost 500 and some change of sidewalk.
Yeah.
In order to get it around that corner there, so.
And really dead-ending on both ends.
Yeah, dead-ending on both ends.
And south of you, is that unincorporated? Yeah, how many lots?
There's only one parcel between...
And then it goes to a wetland.
That goes to a wetland.
Yeah, you can never put a sidewalk there anyway, really.
Yeah. Yeah, there's just not enough room.
Nope, I'm wrong, two parcels. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you. And the high point is kind of like that lot line between Meany's lot and the two to the south of them.
Yeah, and I mean, maybe, you know, eventually, the street on the west side, you know, having sidewalk all the way around to come back to 89th, you know, that might be something residents would use, so. You know, looking at the overview layout here.
They didn't make Lake Hills do any improvements on Deodore?
No. Yeah, like I said, that was, that was then, this is now.
Rhino.
Yeah.
Observing that, that is Thomas St. John up to the west line of...
Thank you for your consideration.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Next item on the list, Altoff Homes proposed subdivision for 60 single-family lots at 12811 109th Avenue, approximately 500 feet from the southwest corner of 109th and White Oak Avenue. Thank you.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Chip Kruzmark. I work for Altoff Homes, and I'm here before you tonight to discuss a concept plan we have for a project. And I'm here before you tonight to discuss a concept plan we have for a project we're calling Streamside. You can see the concept plan ahead of you and then also depending upon your your eyesight, the eleven by seventeen in front of you. We have, I had a small presentation together to kind of give you a quick overview of it. If we could bring that up and and then I'll certainly entertain any questions that you might have while we're doing the slideshow, if you'd like, while it's fresh in everyone's mind. Are you are you able to bring up that PDF? Oh, well, that's the the concept plan itself, I think there's a P, there you go, thanks. That's all right. Um, as you can see on the site location, again, it's a little tough to see right there, but this site's located at the southwest corner of a Hundred Ninth and White Oak, which puts it directly west of Palmyra Golf Course and directly east of Summerlin Estates, a project we had done. It's a thirty seven acre parcel. And if you want to flip to the next one, you can see here, it's a little bit larger and it's outlined in blue. Uh, this is the parcel that we're in the process of annexing. And again, you can see Palmyra to the east and Summerlin to the north, and our top border is a Hundred Ninth. The surrounding zoning from this piece of property ranges from R one to R two to R two P U D. The property to the south is a vacant farm field, and then again, the property to the east is Palmyra, which is now annexed into St. John at this time. Next slide gives a little bit bigger blow up of the plan itself and then just some some key ideas, and obviously we've got to work through a P U D with a variety of of requirements that we'll be happy to work with you all on, but some of our thoughts. Obviously, this concept plan shows sixty units on thirty seven acres, which results in about a one point six units per acre density. About eleven acres of open space, parklands, trails and berms, and that represents about thirty percent of the site. We have shown on here a path, and it might not be terribly easy to see on this display, but you can see in the top right corner, there's a white line, that's our more or less multipurpose path. And we understood in talking with staff that that would probably be a good idea to to bring that down White Oak. The only challenge we have is right about where your marker is, is a single family home that would not be annexed into the town. And there's not a lot of room on the front, in the front yard. So right now, we're proposing to go around the back of the house and then through the development and then back out to White Oak. We're all happy to talk about that as we move forward. These will be single family lots, their minimum size will be eighty feet wide by a hundred and forty feet deep. An HOA will be established for the project to maintain the detention ponds, all the park areas, ponds, trails. We're proposing minimum sizes of eighteen hundred square feet for a ranch and twenty two hundred square feet for a two story home. With setbacks of about thirty feet for the front yard, eight foot side yard setbacks and a forty foot rear yard setback. We are going to encourage three car garages, windows in the garage doors to help make them look a little more appealing. As we currently do, and we do most of our projects, we do have some anti-monotony language to make sure that we don't have the same colors of homes or the same styles or elevations next to each other, that there's a fair amount of separation. We've got language and we'll be happy to work with you and staff on that to see if it's to your liking. And then obviously there'd be many other details in the P U D as we go forward, but tonight, we're just trying to present this to you to get a a general idea of what you think and what things we should, you know, consider as we move forward towards a formal filing. After that, we've got some images of some of our existing homes. We're always making changes to our elevations and floor plans. But as we go through, you'll see some of our ranches here, there's a nineteen hundred, I think there's two nineteen hundred square foot models we're showing. And this is something we would be proposed on this site. And then there's a number of two story plans as well, ranging from about twenty three hundred square feet up to about thirty one hundred square feet. And as I mentioned, there's a number of details we'll get into with the P U D at a later time, but initially, we're just looking to hear what you think about the location, the general layout of the site and take that feedback from you and and see if we can't make this something we're both very proud of. With that, I'll stop talking and entertain any questions or comments you might have.
Yeah, I got one question. What's the width of your houses, like your minimums and your maximums?
Uh, our minimum would be about forty feet wide and our maximum about sixty four feet wide.
Sixty four?
Mm-hmm. And that would be, we can, we look at all of our homes and try to determine how wide of a lot do we need with a third car garage, cause that's typically a lot of what we're seeing, about fifty or sixty percent.
And probably something with the, I'm all about lot width in St. John. And maybe some here on the board agree, some don't, but I'm all about lot width and and I see the, this is your subdivision to the west, correct?
Summerlin, yes, sir, exactly.
And those are hundred foot lots, so no, well, what's the reason going from a hundred down to eighty?
Uh, just to offer a variety. Also, we're working with a site that has some constraints as far as wetlands go.
Yeah.
And it is only thirty seven acres, so it's a pretty small site.
How many lots are sold or built on on in Summerlin?
Summerlin, I think we're probably around, we're about a third through that project as far as sold homes.
Third sold.
Yeah.
How many lots are there, do you know?
Uh, boy, I couldn't tell you right off the bat, I'm sorry.
I don't know, fifty three, that might be the number, well.
It extends quite a ways south.
Oh, yeah, I see seventy, so I don't, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's.
If that's the the way that So, yeah, lot width is always a concern for me. Just having neighbors, that, you know, I said the word before elbow room.
No, yeah, we certainly understand. I I believe if we had our on a typical home with a two car garage, we'd have separation of thirty to forty feet between homes. If every house was built, I'm sorry. Oh, the number of lots? Okay. If if you put two of our largest homes, our widest homes next to each other with three car garages, the the separation would be about seventeen feet between those homes. But we do try to watch where homes are placed for that reason and also for the monotony portion of it, to make sure that we don't have that hap often happen very often.
And then a comment sidewalk. You know, I see the bike path stops at, you know, at that lot that's not getting getting annexed in. You know, maybe move, bring it down across fi lot five and tie it into the lot to the bike path that's on the west side of lot five, that.
Yeah, we could do that as well.
That'd be my suggestion, and then the bike path that's on the west side of lot five, the north, south one, tie it into the one going to the detention pond.
Okay, sure, yeah, that's that's a really good idea. We want to make this all as walkable as possible, people certainly enjoy that, we're all for that as well.
And how close does the wetland come to Hundred Ninth?
It's right up against it.
Right up against it.
Yeah, it's right there, and it's formidable. It's 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 deep and mucky, yeah. I don't know that we could get anything across there, to be honest.
Yeah, and I don't know if, you know, if you you put like a wood deck, you know, across as a bike path, you know, I don't know if that's, you know, crazy thought.
Well, it's not the it's not the craziest thing.
Thinking or, but you know, if we had a sidewalk concrete and then the part that's wetland, it's a you know, treated wood deck or, you know, something that you could get in there that you could allow, you know, to continue that bike path.
We can certainly look into it, I, you know, there's obviously.
I don't know if I'm all, you know, I'm crazy thinking that way, but.
People have said you're crazy, but I don't say that. But no, it's certainly worth looking into, I'm a little concerned about impacting that wetland and how that might be perceived, but happy to look into it.
That's all I have, anybody else? Nope, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Bob, we did talk to Chip about that in our staff review meeting. We sat down, the staff got together. Parks would just like to make sure that that park is maintained by the HOA, cause we already have a lot of parks to maintain. We did discuss putting the bike trail to the north and kind of crossing the wetlands, as you said, planking, interdecking it. Some sort of composite material that would be minimally invasive. Sergio, we looked at proper roadway dedication on on either side, so that way we can properly plan for increasing the size of those roads as needed when, you know, we start moving into the future. There's also possibly discussed, and I didn't discuss this with you, Chip, but possibly getting the northeast corner, making that intersection there a roundabout, so getting roundabout dedication for there at White Oak and Hundred Ninth. That is, our public works director had mentioned that, it's a widely used road, it's kind of it doesn't align right now, as you can see, White Oak with itself. So a roundabout would kind of enable us to, in a way, align that intersection for traffic. Sorry. I'm not even better at that. But yeah, so we were talking about trying to possibly plan for a roundabout in that area. Depending on what happens with Palmyra, we already have the other two corners annexed into town. So there's potential in the future for us to improve that intersection.
Thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing that up, cause I'm not sure how busy Hundred Ninth is, but I'm sure it's getting more and more traffic on it.
I would agree.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
At forty one?
Graystone.
From forty one all the way to White Oak, it backs up, wow, okay.
Yeah, traffic is terrible, and that's one of my main concerns is the density, so I don't know. To me, I would like to see less lots. Just to help people with traffic. Yeah, I don't know.
We were.
And then also, if it's going to be a P U D, hi, very high architectural standards.
We're happy to work towards that with you.
Do you know the current right away on a Hundred Ninth, what Summerlin dedicated? What that is?
I do not, but I can certainly find that out. I would imagine what we should be doing is matching that, though.
Yeah, yeah, the minimum.
Yep.
And Chip, just make sure again that, because it wasn't highlighted in the PowerPoint presentation, that that farmhouse is going to be part of the annexation plan as well, so it's just not just the one house right there.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, that's being annexed too?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's why we would like to run the bike path around it and on ideally on the north side and get the dedication for the roundabout at the corner there. So I just wanted to verify that that is going to be part of it.
Yes, it is part of the annexation. It's a separate home that will be.
The large lot or the smaller lot?
The large lot.
Large lot is being annexed, okay.
We'll be purchasing it at a at a different time, but with the intent that we'll be selling it then.
I think for me, the square footage should align with our normal nineteen hundred for a ranch and then twenty two fifty for a story and a half and twenty four hundred for a two story. The, you guys have been meeting that square footage in Walden Clearing and Summerlin, so I don't see why the units in here couldn't meet that like the rest of the subdivisions.
They they certainly can, we just see a variety of people coming into town, some wanting a big single family house, some wanting something a little bit smaller perhaps, and we're trying to hit that market, whatever that might be. You know, we're not, you know, we have villas that we build that are fourteen and fifteen hundred square foot, we didn't think this was an appropriate place for them with that single family. But we also see people that, you know, want to come home to that house, but maybe they don't want to spend the extra amount of time cutting a yard that's a hundred feet wide. And they want to see that usable space in their backyard where they enjoy things with their family and friends. So we'll certainly look into that.
For the board's reference, Jason did look up, Summerlin gave fifty foot dedication.
Fifty foot, okay, thanks, Jason.
Hundred foot right away is pretty big, and you're gonna need it on a Hundred Ninth.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time and your comments, and I appreciate it.
Next item is Smythe DDS proposed development site plan review of a medical office for a dental practice at one oh eight fifteen Park Place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jeff Kilburg, and this is Juan Villagomez. He's one of our architectural designers at Apex Design Build. Thank you for having us this evening, we wanted to run through a proposed specialty dental office. It's located in the gates of St. John, one of the empty commercial properties in there. Just to kind of give you a rundown, obviously, you have the eleven by seventeen and you also have the PDF up on the screen. But basically, this is a smaller property than what the two thirty one overlay district traditionally has. It's a little over three quarters of an acre.
I'm sorry, is this the correct lot that I have highlighted?
That is.
So it's actually sewn as a P U D, but it is also part of the overlay district, so when we talked to Sergio, he kind of sent us the checklist for the overlay district. So that's what we're, Jeff here was mentioning, the overlay district.
Correct. So we've had a couple meetings with Sergio via Zoom, just to kind of run through some of the common requirements in the area. This site, because it is a little over three quarters of an acre, the building proposed square footage based on Dr. Smythe's needs is forty eight hundred square feet. So based on how the calculation works in terms of building ratio, the building ratio would fall at right at fourteen percent, which is under the seventeen percent, which would be calculated for the the lot size. So if you want to look at it from one direction, that would be somewhat of a variance in that situation. But the building size and footprint of the building, along with the parking lot footprint, is designed in a fashion to house at the east side, Dr. Smythe's staff, and then also give a non congestive area to allow their patients come in and out of the space without interrupting staff parking. Currently, our plan, just keeping Dr. Smythe's budget in mind, obviously, is to go within architecturally pleasing vinyl cladding throughout on the building. You can kind of see that in the elevations, there's a board and batten above with a lap siding below it. You know, gable on the front as well, we do have eight corners to the building, that was one item that Sergio mentioned would be a requirement. A very, another variance which we wanted to cover would be bicycle parking. This is a situation where she will be doing like oral surgery practices. And in typical situations like that, their patients are not going to be coming in on a bicycle. They're going to need, you know, assistance leaving, and so we just felt like in this situation, it may be logical not to have a biking, a bike parking area. Another variance that we wanted to cover was the setback at the north, so as you all are probably aware, that's a private driveway that's going into a church development to the east. Right now, it's zoned residential P U D, and I'm not sure what the plans are either from the city of St. John's or the Plan Commission side. If the church is going to be allowed to utilize that residential zoning, I know that's pretty common. But that's something we want to talk about, because obviously it's being utilized more as of a commercial purpose rather than residential purpose. So we have the setback set up just in terms of flow for obviously the the parking lot and then the proximity and size of the building. Right now, on our site plan, we are showing a six foot fence there, but I wanted to propose potentially to see if there was a an idea Uh, but I wanted to propose, uh, potentially to see if there was a, an idea or a possibility to diffuse that area with landscaping, um, and maybe not meet the opaque requirements, mainly because that will be more of a commercial entrance rather than residential.
Just to be clear, he's speaking about the north side on the property where that driveway is. So we have that fence wrapped around just because, uh, by zoning code, there's residential on both the north and the east side and you'd need some kind of screening. I believe the zoning code says you can do six-foot opaque fence. So that's what we are proposing at the moment. And then Jeff was mentioning that it's a private driveway. So we're hoping, uh, our setback right now for the building is, uh, 15 feet, which I believe for residential is 45 feet. But with our lot being such a small lot, it's kind of hard to put parking in a building and with that kind of setback.
Um, along with the setback at the north side, the east side, uh, parking lot does encroach on the setback there. So we would be looking for a variance in that situation. Um, you know, as you guys see on the site plan, uh, we are definitely, uh, making sure that we have adequate amount of foliage and trees, shrubs. And obviously, these would be, uh, compliant trees. Uh, I know Sergio mentioned to us, no Bradford pear trees. Um, so we'll be working to align the landscaping to that. And, um, obviously, as this, the site matures, uh, you know, into the future, those trees will grow continuously larger and continue to screen that property next door. But just from, again, from the Dr. Smythe's budget side, just trying to keep things under control and, uh, would propose the idea potentially if the commission was up to it, um, to waive some of the, the screening requirements in terms of opaque fence and maybe go with more of a natural landscaping setup. Um, to the south of this property, it is already commercial. So, uh, like zoning, we don't have any type of, uh, needs or changes there from that standpoint. Um, the other area that we wanted to cover was the refuse area. Um, per some of the code requirements that we've reviewed, there is a structure over the top of refuse, uh, that is required. We talked to Sergio pretty extensively about this and, uh, just wanted to propose that this wouldn't have a roof structure over it. Um, from collecting garbage, uh, from a garbage truck, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to us from the planning side. Um, it would be thinking a concrete masonry structure with a, you know, brick veneer on the exterior. So it would look, um, you know, aesthetically pleasing from that standpoint, but, um, just would like to approach it without a roof instead. So with this in mind, I'd like to.
I think it's gotta be a covered dumpster, but not so much the enclosure covers.
That's, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
What, what were you thinking, Ken?
That we don't require roofs over, uh, the dumpster thing. The dumpster itself has to have a roof.
Okay. Perfect. That solves that problem.
Most of them do, yeah.
Um, so kind of running through those points, um, wanted to give you guys some opportunity to ask some questions and hopefully we can, uh, have corresponding answers for you guys.
What's the rear yard setback?
The rear yard setback.
St. John's rear yard. Your, I see yours is what, 23, almost 24 feet?
Right. So, uh, that's actually, we're speaking specifically here about the yard requirements, not necessarily for the building, but for the actual landscaping. And I believe that is 45 feet.
Forty-five.
So, again, because of the parking requirements and the size of the lot, it's kind of hard to do the 45 feet around the building and around the lot as a setback, plus to meet the doctor's requirements of both parking and the building size.
Keeping in mind, you know, Dr. Smythe, obviously, um, she's gonna have a lot of support sta, support staff for herself. Um, and that's the idea in mind behind that eastern wing of the parking lot is that's gonna be dedicated to her staff, uh, from that standpoint. So we were trying to accommodate, um, you know, obviously, her request from that standpoint. From a code perspective, as you guys probably are seeing over at the right side, um, 27 parking spots would be code requirement. So we're at 33 currently.
Okay, any questions?
What about, uh, have you looked at storm drainage and some detention? Or where's the storm water gonna run off of this site?
Yeah, so, um, as part of the development here that, uh, Mr. Lawton had done, uh, there is already utilities that are located in Park Place that we're gonna tie into. So our storm water will discharge into their, uh, designed storm water, uh, retention, uh, facility within the PUD.
And as you know, um, the gates has community-wide detention areas.
Okay.
So they don't have to have one right on this lot.
Okay.
But they have to be able to conduct the 100-year storm into whatever conveyance that, uh, that they have available to them. Like when they put the church in just north of here.
So this development would have to convey 100-year into the existing storm sewer?
Well, they have to be able to get the, um, five-year storm into a sewer and the rest of it can go over land, as long as they have a route for it to take to get to one of the detention bases. One, uh, just north of here, that church that just went in, they had to build, um, a swale to connect to the swale that took it to the detention basin.
Okay.
And that happened off-site of their property, but it was still on Mr. Lawton's property and he allowed them to do it. So as long as we can get the water off the site and into the detention area that's now to the north of there, um, should be okay.
Okay. It's good now.
You can see all the ditches on there. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to go back to the discussion about the, uh, roof of the accessory building. So in the US 231 overlay district, uh, there are specific requirements that any accessory building for refuse storage shall be designed to include a roof structure and be architecturally compatible with the principal building.
A roof structure?
So there is in the zoning ordinance, a requirement for a roof structure over an ex, for an accessory building that's used for refuse storage.
Thanks, thanks. Thanks for looking that up, Mr. Decker.
Any other questions I can answer?
Nope. Any, any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the list, the gates of St. John, unit 1H. Primary plat review, three single-family lots. Anybody here from that?
We're, we're not, we're not that, but we're here to hear about it.
Okay.
And we're here to express. So can we approach microphone?
Not platted out, subdivision.
On the green there, it's just the right side.
I believe we still do. Because it needs to go for zoning, too.
Ken, can you shed any light on this? What they?
Not really. Um, I just saw this, uh, when, when Sergio sent it over in a packet. The way I understand it, a long time ago, when the gates first came in, though, uh, the water tower lot was donated to the town and it was supposed to also have a fire station on the, on that lot. But when they built the tower, there wasn't enough room to put the fire station. So I, I don't know whatever happened to that land if, if it was donated to the town for the fire station and the tower and the town still owns it? Or if it was given back because they couldn't use it for the fire station? I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Who's, who owns that? Can you tell?
Can you click on it, see who owns it?
Current owner is the town of St. John.
It is? Okay.
Yes.
So, that, that's all I really know about it. And when those, um, subdivisions to the south of there came in, that's when they extended that street through that property. And I think it's called Walnut Street, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Walnut Drive.
Walnut Drive, yeah. So that was allowed to be put in there, even though there's no street right-of-way.
So St. John owns the lot, but the gates want to develop it?
Mr. Chairman, um, I believe this specific parcel, since again, as Ken said, the fire station cannot be built on there. Um, I believe as part of a settlement agreement with Mr. Lawton, um, the town is to turn it back over to him for development. I don't believe if that has been executed yet. As you can see on the GIS, it's still owned by the town of St. John, although it's po, possible that that could be incorrect. I'm not 100% sure on that. I've only two months into this job.
Right.
However, he would also have to go through zoning because it's currently zoned, um, public. Um, so I, again, without having any representative from LBL Development here, um, I'm not, I, I'm not sure if they're just seeking comment right now, obviously, since it is just a, a study session, um, from the board.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's the history as I, as I know it on this property.
Well, the, the town is still cutting a hole on there, so.
Chris, I believe you are, according to the agreement, which hasn't been executed, you are correct with, it hasn't been returned, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds, it sounds like some things gotta be cleared up. This is a study session, but I'll allow you to speak if you want to come up.
Just, just from our perspective, when we saw this, um, as, as people who live on the ends.
You gotta speak into the mic, ma'am.
Yeah, uh, as people who live on the, the ends of, next to that and across from that, um, is, is that when we saw this, that it's, uh, three single-family lots? It's not hardly one acre of land. And so we live in the gates of St. John, Acorn 2 Town Homes. And now we're gonna put, in our townhome section, we're gonna put single-family lots? And what are they gonna look like? Because we all look the same. All of our townhomes look the same.
Well, it looks like, ma'am, there's two addresses for each lot, so it's probably duplexes. The same as what's south of this.
Dutch Mill built our townhomes.
Pardon?
Dutch Mill built our townhomes. If John Lawton or, or if John Lawton has Philippi build those, they're not gonna look the same. So we're concerned about that. We're concerned about right next door. We're concerned about how much space is gonna be on there. You know, and are they gonna look the same?
Yeah.
And then do they become a part of our HOA?
Yeah.
So we just, that, those are our concerns.
I have a lot right next door, so I have a big concern about what's going to happen next to me.
Yeah.
So is this a, a?
Duplex.
The road right by east of the water tower, is that a dedicated road or is that just a?
No.
That goes into.
Wait, hold on.
No. No.
No, they say it's not.
The one behind, there's a small road behind. And that is between, uh, Park Place and the other side.
Yeah, where he has the arrow, he's, Jason's saying it's not.
That's a dedicated road there, that's.
Neither of those are.
But behind there, that smaller one, is like a little frontage road that goes behind the lot.
To go to Park.
They, they used to use that when they were building Park Place.
That is non-dedicated, correct?
Right, but this one is not dedicated either.
Oh, well.
Because you can see that the lots are going to the center line of the street.
Well, I don't, we live there, so I don't know what that means, whether it's dedicated or not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would suggest that you request the, uh, ladies to identify themselves by their name and address for purposes of the public record.
Okay. Yeah, please identify yourself.
My name is Karen Schranz, S.C.H.R.A.N.Z. I live at 1720 Walnut Drive, which is the first townhouse duplex, uh, right there. Uh, no, uh, of, of Dutch Mill, which is, um, right there. The one with the gray, uh, here. D, D, it says D. It says letter D on it.
On the roof.
Right. Right there. And I have that grassy loty area there.
Ma'am, what's your name?
Hi, I'm Teresa Flamini. It's F as in Frank, L.A.M.I.N.I. And I'm at 10707 Walnut Drive. I am the lot across the street from the water tower place. I would be directly next to the lots that Mr. Lawton wants to build on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to us.
Yeah.
What happens? Like, will this come up again? Because we need to be here for that.
Yep, it'll come on, it'll come up again.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the list, Three Springs Edition, Phase 3, Block 1. Final plat review of three single-family lots.
I just got a email on Monday from Doug Reddick saying that all the, that they were, uh, coming in for secondary plat approval for this, uh, Phase 3, uh, Block 1. And that's all I know.
Okay.
Uh, I haven't got in touch with Public Works yet to find out if all the, uh, infrastructure is completed or not yet. But I will, I will do that forthwith.
Yeah.
I never get to say forthwith. I know.
If you want to be a comedian, you should.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Everybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just briefly.
Yes.
I spoke earlier about the 10 or 15-day notice requirement for public hearings. Um, I, I believe I misspoke in the sense that, uh, 10 days is in fact what the state statute and what the town ordinance requires and has required.
Okay.
And so if I, if I suggested 15 days was potentially applicable, I misspoke.
Okay.
What is applicable, though, is, is whether or not it would be one newspaper or two newspapers.
About two for both, right?
It, it is, after the changes were made. And so there's a, I had a question based on the application date, whether it would be one newspaper or two newspapers. So I, I've sent an email to Sergio. I'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Anderson, too, just to clarify and confirm, uh, those concerns that I raised, so that's all.
That's all I have? Wrap it up. Motion adjourned.